That's scary. Okay, well, thank you everyone for coming today. It's just six o'clock and I will call the regular meeting of the April 5th, 2022, meeting of the Board of Education, Northwood Board of Education to Order. First on our agenda is an awards presentation.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to give out three awards to some sixth grade students and welcome to the meeting. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. And you just have to sweep up that. Yeah. I see one more student who is coming in, so I'm wondering if we might wait until he arrives before we begin.
We should talk about the highlights of the game last night.
Oh, the basketball game? Yeah, I actually did not watch the basketball game. But I did watch the women's game on Monday. There weren't a lot of highlights to report on that, unfortunately. Let me go. Oh, here they are. Hi, welcome. No, come and sit down. We waited to start until you arrived. And we wanted to welcome you as well to the meeting. We have three awards to present this evening, and I'm very honored to be able to do so. So the first award that I'd like to present is the Susan A. Brusso Award. This award is given in memory of Susan A. Brusso, a beloved aunt of Botel students, Stephen and Catherine Kasejak. Ms. Brusso volunteered for many years as a basketball and softball coach. This award is given every year to a boy and a girl who show exemplary character and leadership in athletics. And this year, these awards go to Alexandra Luciano and Rex Krippe. The last award we're going to present tonight is the Doc Casey Deloy Award. This award is named for a former teacher at Botel, Doc Casey Deloy. This award is presented to the student who has shown the most interest and skill in the area of computer science. The recipient's name will be inscribed on a plaque which is hung near the library, and this year the award goes to Forrest Lee.
I was wondering, could we take a picture of you with each of the award recipients holding up their award?
Sure. Wouldn't that be great?
Yeah, that's right.
Do you want to take it right here? Outside? Where would you like it?
Um, well, outside is nicer, but might take longer. It doesn't matter to me. How about right by the Northwood Board of Education?
So here's what she has. Let's open that door just like that. Is that good? Okay.
No hat?
Congratulations, guys. All of you. That's really, that's really impressive. And I have to say, I don't know what this says about my age, but I actually know both of the the women that those are are named after. I'm not sure how I feel about that. They would all be very proud to have you receive the awards.
Absolutely.
Okay, next on our agenda is public comments. The Northwood Board of Education welcomes public comments. We asked that all all people commenting limit their comments to five minutes and know that it is our policy not to answer a public comment immediately, but rather to answer after the meeting as as appropriate following up where need be. Would anyone like to make a public comment? And I'll tell you, so we're going to go on to the business of the meeting, and you're more than welcome to stay. I'd love to have people here, but I totally understand if you want to.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for coming. Congratulations.
Yeah, there's nobody on Zoom.
We will.
Always.
Watch your step there. Yeah.
You can leave it open.
Okay, so um, we have two sets of minutes in our packet. There were the minutes of the regular meeting of March 1st. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
I passed them out. There are actually three sets. You need another one here, just in case. This is the corrected copy from the last dress regular official regular meeting. Yes.
Can we say what changes?
Yes.
It's just, it just changed nominations to votes.
Oh, yes. Okay.
I move approve the minutes from the regular meeting of March 1st, 2022.
Yes, you should. I'll second that motion. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, and Amy of Eric's. And then we have the minutes from the special meeting of March 17.
Minutes from the special meeting of March 17, 2022.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Next, let me turn it as correspondence. Didn't receive any first ones to report on this time around. And now the superintendent's report.
So I sent a verb in the packet. I don't really have anything additional to report right now. Do you have any questions about anything that was in the packet or otherwise?
Thank you for the little, the little gift.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And as it was Board of Appreciation Month, I would like to take a moment to also say thank you to all of our board members. Thank you for working so hard. And all and so many of you coming in when, you know, we've had a lot of kind of weighty issues right at the beginning of your, your, your stint here. So thank you for your stepping up and showing up. Thank you. Also, I think it's useful to to say out loud for anybody watching that we are wholly steady at four snow days, which moves the last day of school to June 15th. And that means we are looking to schedule the the sixth grade promotion ceremony to on June 14th, Tuesday, June 14th, for sixth grade promotion, 15th is the last day of school. I also, I really do, I think it's great having the awards here at the, at the Board of Ed, so thank you for making that happen. And, you know, the whole, the committee and everyone who worked on that to make that, make that happen to me. That's great.
It felt a lot more personal to do that.
Yeah.
Than promotion. So I I thought that that was a nice change, and I appreciate everyone's feedback and work on making that happen, too.
I think it's nice, too, because hopefully, you know, it gives parents a good, they can go and celebrate their children now and have an extra moment for that.
Do you want to vote on the motion date?
Just so we can. Oh, that's something we need to do. Okay. Okay, so we need to, we need a motion to to set the the promotion date for Tuesday, June 14th, for our sixth grade promotion ceremony. Anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to hold the sixth grade promotion ceremony on, I'm assuming, the evening of June 14th. So make that clear.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Motion gave us June 14th.
All right, and we will let parents know we're letting this note.
Great. And thank you for checking that there are no conflicts with the eighth or 12th grade. That's always important. Oh, yeah. So we went, so the transition to to mass optional. So it's been a month now.
Yeah.
And that's going all right.
Yeah, it was, it was like not even a blip.
Great. So no reports of stress or no one's like
The only communication I had was a parent who called to say thank you. I said, well, on behalf of the board, you're welcome. On behalf of the governor, you're welcome. But there was, there was no
Good.
Issue.
We have such lovely complaints. Okay, if, if there, does anyone else have questions on Mary Beth's report? Okay, let's move on to the principal's report.
Okay. Well, it's been nice to have people back in the building. I just have to start off by saying that. And so we were able to welcome Roaring Brook to the building two times for our students in grades kindergarten through four. They do a great school collaboration project with us for many years, and our students are actually going to go on a field trip to Roaring Brook to kind of cap off all that they have learned. So we were happy to have them in the building. The Student Council planned a fun-filled Spirit Week. Thank you to the PTO for giving us the green light to go ahead and do that. I think it create, it created some interesting new traditions like Waffle Day, which after the Student Council voted on Waffle Day, they said to me, what are we going to do on Waffle Day? I said, it was your idea. I'm not sure. There was another idea, actually Forrest Layton had it, called Condiment Day, which was much more well thought out, but did not get the votes. We ultimately decided to do Waffle Sundays on the playground, and that Friday was particularly lovely, so it worked out in their favor. But I do want to give a shout out to the PTO. Michelle Padua created a St. Patrick's Day scavenger hunt. The kids loved it. It was really, really special. And you know, so that that was a fun addition to Spirit Week, as well as Pizza and Movie Night returned, and you know, that was great. We had very well-attended conferences. We conducted a lockdown drill on the 30th, the first of a series of three. So we'll plan another one, you know, based in May. We'll, you know, modify things based on the feedback that, you know, we get from staff, and then we're actually planning an evacuation drill where students and staff are going to evacuate the building, travel along our evacuation routes to our safe location, and that's going to happen in June. I believe the last time we we did that was before I became principal. So I've been working with Mr. Byrne to coordinate that. Last week was a busy week with the Art of Inspiration Cultural Arts Program and the Little Mermaid Junior. I just, like, words can't even begin to describe the, you know, how impressed I think our students were with that performance, and certainly our staff. And it seems like six short weeks, you pulled together an amazing production that really just spoke to the talent that's in our school and our community, you know, parents, community members. Really, it was just such a testament to people's commitment to children in Norfolk. And it served as such an inspiration for our students who aren't, weren't old enough to participate. So, you know, you've, you've set the bar high now. No pressure for the future, but really, that was just so appreciated and well done. So thank you. I also wanted to provide you an update with regards to meeting with teachers after, you know, hearing some of the concerns that were raised about multi-age. And so I wanted the board to know that I scheduled meetings with all staff members. We had very productive conversations, and from there, our teacher, our school leadership team, otherwise known as PDEC, met. We spent hours, you know, kind of poring over the teachers' responses and analyzing their responses, and really looked for trends in what they were saying. And so we, again, as the school leadership committee, were kind of in the process still of creating a plan for how to, you know, continue to improve, which is our always goal at Botel School. Every year, we create a continuous improvement plan. We plan professional development that's aligned to that. And so this will, you know, tie into work we've always done. So I'll be, you know, sharing with the board what is happening moving forward, but rest assured, you know, we are committed to, you know, always improving our school and take the feedback from our, you know, students very, or our staff very seriously. So more to come on that. And I wanted to let you know that our new daytime custodian, Bob Marianni, started on the 4th. We're really excited to welcome him to Botel, but I would be remiss if I didn't give a huge thank you to Tyler Yeltsit, who really stepped up in the transition period. He worked countless overtime hours, kept our school in tip-top shape, showed tremendous initiative with reaching out to contractors, keeping, you know, our building safe and secure. And so it's with great gratitude that I, you know, thank Tyler for all he's done. So upcoming events, we welcome our new precares who will join us next year to Botel on Thursday for a pre-K screening. The sixth grade is planning a pasta takeout dinner for this Friday, so be sure to, you know, get your takeout pasta dinner and support the sixth grade. It's a fundraiser for the sixth grade trip, which is happening next week. Next week, the sixth grade goes to Nature's Classroom and Project Oceanology. We leave on Monday and return on Thursday. There's no school on Friday, and then it's spring vacation. We did welcome three new students to Botel, and you'll see our enrollment is, you know, a robust 72. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How many students are coming in for the pre-K screening?
We have six.
So the lockdowns, are they ever coordinated with like the emergency response personnel, the troopers or the
They are, these are not. They're in-house ones. When we do the evacuation drill, we are going to coordinate with first responders, particularly because we have to coordinate the crossing of Route 44. So we want to try to make that as realistic as possible. So we will do that for the evacuation drill. In the past, there have been times where we've invited our state trooper to that, to the lockdown drill to give us feedback. This time, we invited our fire police, John Martin, and he came. So we had Tyler positioned in one area where teachers may have decided to evacuate based on the information that was given in the lockdown drill, and we had Martin positioned at the playground, just to be kind of a stopgap. So people, you know, knew when to come in. We learned that the, you know, intercom doesn't project into the upper parking lot, so it was important to have somebody there so they would know when the drill was over and students could re-enter the building. So all of those little practices just give us more information about, you know, how to plan for things that we may not have otherwise known, like you can't text from the parking lot. So you know, we, we're, all of that is helpful in moving forward, but.
Do we have a, do we, have we ever looked into like a, I think we did, like a cell booster or something like that that would help with texting dead spots and cell phone dead spots?
I can't recall. At one point, Richard did investigate that, and I'm not sure what happened, but I can check with him to see.
Because they have those like micro towers and things that you can do to, even just Wi-Fi extenders would be enough if we put enough of them around. Would get, you know, you could plug one in at the gym tower. My, I know the gym tower is all encased in concrete, but still, I think it might help.
That's a really good thing. We can talk about that at the safety and security meeting that's coming up.
What about a walkie-talkie system, like an emergency walkie-talkies, where in that, in case of everyone of certain staff level grab a walkie-talkie and they head into different directions if the Wi-Fi boosters aren't?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. You guys do have.
We do. We don't have enough for every staff member right now, and so we are using the intercom system as a, you know, as another alternative. But I believe we looked into that as well, haven't we? The walkie-talkies.
And it keeps coming. We did, and we've got, we have several in the building, and we, at one point, we, there was a reason why we didn't, we had people hooked up onto the cell phones.
Yep, and then that. I think we found out that maybe the walkie-talkies were cost prohibitive, but I can't recall. Kathy, what do you remember about this?
Having them in the classroom, you'd have to have them on if you're going to hear an emergency, but you also hear. So we just threw up. We need this in. So we decided against that, and that's why we have the intercom system.
Yeah.
The classroom now for emergencies, everybody can hear.
Are the walkies part of the emergency drills?
Not for everyone. No.
Right.
Because of that.
He staff, like the people who take certain directions, like not, I wouldn't assume everyone would have one.
Yeah. And I think like, it's important to note, too, within a drill situation, if you can't text from the school parking lot, that's one thing. But if it were, like, if there were a real need to evacuate, you wouldn't, you know, reach out to anyone until you were in a safe location, and that place will have Wi-Fi and will be able to reach people. So I think that, you know, while it's an obstacle for a drill, it might not be an obstacle if there were ever a real reason, which that would be the most important time to have everybody, you know, be able to be accounted for and communicate.
And if if you're calling 911, you get pretty much any signal. It, it, it doesn't necessarily just go to your tower, it goes to any connection. So if you had to make an emergency call from anywhere on campus.
Yeah.
You can't text, but can you call with the phone ring?
That's a good question.
No, and the playground and the fields are dead zones, too.
They are.
Oh, yeah, that used to be a huge issue for me, but that's not separate thing.
For phone as well as text.
All of that. That's why the nurse always had a walkie-talkie, or anyone that went down with my kid to the playground had a walkie-talkie because there was no way to communicate with anyone in the building.
Well, if we could get a Wi-Fi boost, I mean, that's the only reason anybody's cellphone works here anyway, is because we're all connected to the Wi-Fi. So that could be a good solution.
So maybe there's like, maybe there's something that, I don't know if you could get something that would extend all the way to the field, but it would be fantastic if it did.
Yeah.
Um, but the, I think it would be worthwhile to look into kind of a, like, overall, like, kind of mesh network that you could put out that would be a Wi-Fi booster. I'm still thinking it'd be worthwhile to put up some signs with the Wi-Fi password, the guest password, because I feel like I answer that question more for anybody else, I mean, more than any other question I answer. And I'm not very good at that answer, because I can't ever quite remember.
Anytime anyone asks me, I say it's either this or
It's not welcome, one, two, three.
No.
Guest one, two, eight.
I wrote that down. Great idea.
Okay, thank you. More than if it was like in the hall of light, where
Yeah.
I end up sharing that password on my phone.
Yeah. No, that would be very helpful, I think, for a large number of people. Yep, easy to accomplish that.
Yeah. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for? Policy Committee, I know I met today. Jay, was there anything you'd like to share from that meeting?
There is. So Policy met today, April 5th. And we have, we started to review the policies for adoption. We have 10 policies total. Nine of them are revisions, and one of them is a new policy. And so we would actually like to submit to the board the new policy. So I'll distribute these. Oh, yeah. And we would like everybody to take a look at this and hopefully have a second read or at the meeting on, in May, and hopefully adopt it. So this is all a new policy. It's not revision. And so if there's any questions about that, in the meantime, feel free to email me. And then in May, we'll submit policies two, three, and four, the first three revision policies for review to have a read in June. They are good, that right?
This is like a fun one. I see the word cannabis. Thank you. Okay. Shared services. Oh, it's the first Tuesday. We, it was a really nice short meeting, because we don't have any huge policy things. Just Mary Beth mentioned in superintendent's meeting, like the regional one, that it's been recommended to just let families know if any of them leave for spring break, that we can distribute COVID tests to them before the students return to make sure that they've had one negative or two, two negative tests.
So there's nothing that's required, but if people know they're going to go away for the break or be with people who aren't typically in their bubble, they'll have to test so that if they want to test, and we will send out a communication that basically says, if, you know, if you would like to take a test, let us know, we'll send them home with you. And then if, before you come back to school, if you have a child who's symptomatic, you would, you know, be well advised to take the test. And, you know, whether it's negative or positive, if it's positive, there's a clear, you know, path. But if it's negative and you're still symptomatic, wait two or three days and take it again. And then for those who might think that they were exposed and have a known exposure, they too would be advised to take the test. We take it in a couple of days just to make sure that, you know, they're safe to come back. But there are no, there are no statutes, there are no executive orders, there's nothing that we can do to require those actions, but people have been very cooperative, and I'm hoping that if they have the test in their hands and there's any chance that their child might not be long enough to come back to school, they'll take advantage.
Right. We just don't want a repeat of January after.
Yeah, I think that's she is.
Yes, yeah, she wrote a letter and will send it home paper and electronically. That was the big thing. That's it. Yeah, thank you. Sorry. I won't take it personally. Okay, shared services.
We did meet. They, we just went over some changes, I guess, in the IEP, the way it's going to be performed is going to change as of July 1st, which I guess something affects how all our students are tested as well. They're going to go to a real-time data versus basically change how they pull the information versus over time through testing, and then with the real-time data to identify, I guess, weaker points of that specific student, so they know how to readdress and refocus that. So that is the real big change that they'll be doing. And they just went over the the loss of Michabell and how, you know, we're currently looking for replacement. And they went over the King-King audits and finances and how they are looking for new bus drivers as well. It's really, everything was kind of the same, the transportation of, I guess, your transportation of buses drivers, because the cost was down, but gas is I guess your transportation of buses drivers, because the cost was down, but gas has increased, they're kind of, they're still breaking even in that aspect. Coming over their budget. And they were adding more money to the budget for special education teaching, um, and testing supplies for, um, IEPs and PPTs for that new rollout.
Thank you. I know that the PTO didn't meet this Monday. No, I don't think so.
I'm sorry.
Like, I'm sorry.
Sorry, can I add you one more thing? Sure, I'm sorry, I apologize. They did talk about the mask and they said it rolled out really great. It was a positive transition. And nine, they're still like ninety-nine percent of people happy that the masks were bought.
Oh, good.
That was their other big topic.
Thanks.
I don't have a report, but, um, the PTO, we did create a band account. So if anyone, um, in the school, any parents want to join, um, you can just search for Botel PTO on the band. And, um, this way we have different chat threads based on different topics and we can organize events and resources and volunteers a little bit better than just like, say, a text thread or an email thread.
We could send out the link and then people can just join it or, you know, disjoin it whenever they choose to. And that way, it's, you don't have to, like, if you had a person texting them to remember who you're texting.
Right, so if you just go to band, the app, and just search for Botel PTO, you should be able to find it and then just get approved to join.
We should send that out in the newsletter.
Yeah, sure. Do you want to write up a little blurb?
Yeah.
And we'd be happy to put it in there.
Yeah, it's been a nice way, like, with the St. Patrick's Day stuff and all those, all the Spirit Week things, we could just keep track a little bit easier than one massive text thread.
Yeah.
That was getting cumbersome. Thank you.
We haven't met, but I was waiting for the budget to kind of go to the board of finance for us to meet and get feedback. But I did see Joe in town.
We, he's anxious to talk. Yeah, yeah. Good, so great. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to that in our agenda. I don't think we have anything under unfinished business, but under new business, I wanted to ask the board to consider doing a, a new board member orientation, uh, group together. Uh, this is something that I did a long time ago when I first became a board member. We have a lot of new board members now. Even like you guys, who I think are veteran board members, are still pretty new board members. And I don't think you've been through that. Have you been through one of those? Oh, you did that new board member orientation?
Okay, yeah.
Oh, you guys did your own thing, so you didn't have like a.
We went to Kate.
Oh, wow, thank. That's awesome. I was gonna say you can leave this one, but, uh, but anyway, uh, thank you for doing that. Um, but we, I thought that if we could have someone come and we could set a date to meet them, then that would be great, so. Mary Beth, if you could look into.
Yeah, I, I reached out to Patrice McCarthy, who is wonderful. Bob Raider has been here in the past, but Patrice, I think, is a really more user-friendly facilitator, but she said she's out of town and as soon as she gets back, she'll get back to me with dates, but she would love to come in and visit with us. I told her that Tuesdays were typically good evenings for board members, so she's going to look at her calendar and see what she has for Tuesdays between now and the end of the year. And you had indicated that you didn't want to use a board meeting Tuesday, but I'm wondering if she is, if, if that might be an only option, if we could reschedule the board meeting to another Tuesday.
But I'll let you. Let's see how her schedule shakes out and how that looks out. Right, okay, thank you. Okay, um, well then, I think we're ready to move to the executive session on our agenda. So I think that means that we stop recording.
Do we have to make the motion?
Oh, we have to make a motion.
I will move to the executive session.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion carry.
Okay, and then I'm going to make a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of April fifth, twenty twenty-two.
I will second that as well.
All those in favor?
Okay. All right, have a great night, everybody. Take care.